Gentlemen, time is eight fifty-one and the board is now reconvened in open session. We do not have any action on any closed-session items, but we do have some action on a couple of other items. The first item is the approval, consideration of approval of the edge new positions and the stipend schedule for two thousand sixteen seventeen.
Madam President, I move to approve the recommended action as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. Rosenthal regarding the edge program positions and the edge stipends. Do we have discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, the motion passes unanimously. The next item we'll consider is the consolidation of the District Alternative Education Program at the Ferndale Henry Center for Learning.
Madam President, I move to approve the recommended action as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rosenthal.
I was just curious as to what kind of feedback you got, because I don't know about any other board members, but I haven't seen any flying around out there, so.
We've not gotten any substantial feedback. A number of the teachers have actually expressed positive sentiment about it, but there hasn't been any major, any feedback we've received at all.
Thank you.
Mrs. Tosin.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Dupree and his staff for working on this. I think we've discussed as a board many times the need to reduce the number of referrals to DAEP, and I commend the team for working hard on discipline and getting those numbers down, and for looking for ways to not only save money, but to consolidate our kids to one campus, reduce the number of referrals, and get our kids in special ed back in the classroom. So, I want to thank you guys for doing that.
Excellent. I have a question about the MR Wood Center for Learning, as it's currently called right now. Is, we talked, you talked about some repurposing ideas, and I was wondering if is it, is it the plan to keep the same name and to recognize Mr. Wood and his contributions for our school district?
I think the name is very important to the community and the area, and we would not want to change the name. It will still be a Center for Learning, but the Center for Learning will focus on learning as in parent education for parents of special needs children, and professional development for special needs children. So, it will still be a Center for Learning, just not an alternative school Center for Learning, retaining that name.
Thank you, Dr. Hill. I think that's nice, and I think you're right that it is important to the history of the community. All right, do we have further discussion on this item? All right, all those in favor of this consolidation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And then the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Our next items are all review items, and the first, the first section there for review is the, is the policies. And I was gonna, do you have something to say before I talk? Okay, you're looking at me like your green light's on. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead. I, just to, so, the trustees know, I've been looking a lot at these policies. I'm excited about this comprehensive policy review, probably, you know, overly excited about it. But, I sent in a number of questions and spent a little time with Beth and the legal department last week, putting some questions into play, and so, I thought it might help organizing our discussion tonight if we did sort of policy by policy, and you can see what my comments or questions were as we go on, and then if you have additional comments or questions on particular policies, you can add those up there. And from what I hear, they've got a slide per policy. Is that accurate, Mrs. Martinez?
Yes, that is accurate.
Okay.
We have some help on the other side of the room that will capture comments and feedback and questions as we go through each policy.
Okay, great. So, the first one that is EHAC, and that's one that was being deleted, and I had two questions on this. It's, we've got, my questions were, where are we addressing access to high school? This question is up there, actually. Access to high school courses for middle school kids, well, maybe this is all combined in one thing, and where are we addressing the impact to GPA and class rank on high school courses for middle school students? So, access is one, and impact of GPA and class rank. Does anybody else have any other questions or?
Yeah. That's partly my question, too, is where, where can everyone get their access to those credits for middle school, for all of our middle schools across our district?
Right, so we had questions about that exactly, Addie. So, is it equitable access, or is it only accessible at certain places? How are we making that equitable for all our students? But then, how are we managing that? So, students have access to these courses, they take the courses, and then what happens? In the next step, what happens to that credit going forward? Is it part of their GPA? Is it not? How do we make it fair as we go forward?
I haven't.
Okay, Mr. George, I'm sorry, you need to?
I have a follow-up on that, actually. I just wonder how we are going to decide which campus is going to have these courses. And obviously, I don't know we are capable of putting these programs in every campuses. I don't know.
So, we're not gonna decide that, actually, because we're just writing the policy about how it would be implemented and the policy around it.
There should be some criteria, right?
Well, we're not, we're not, it's administration's job to work out where the courses are gonna be.
Okay.
We're just bringing up the accessibility and the impact of those classes within the policy that they're suggesting deleting.
Sure.
So, I'm just saying, and they're gonna work on researching, I think, this week, where that is going, Mrs..
I think, Mr. George is saying, the same thing what we're saying is, where are, how are we gonna define the policy of all our students at middle school level? Do they all get access to this, this high school credit? I think that's what he's asking, where are these classes gonna be?
Right, and I thought he was saying that we were deciding where particular places. You're just saying, how are we gonna have access for everybody?
Yeah, how we can provide access to every schools, and obviously, we cannot put these courses in every campuses. That's what I feel like, or maybe it is not financially feasible to do it. So, do we have any policy in place to just maybe a centrally located place or something?
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Verdi.
So, I would like to have access for all students, of course, to have these courses, but what I don't want to see is that they start high school with an advantage over the other students.
Thank you.
So, if they're more than welcome to take the course, and they can get the credit for it, but it will not impact their GPA. Everyone in ninth grade should start off, in ninth grade, with the same level playing field.
Right, so, and that's, I agree with that.
I agree with that, too.
Concept. But here's where the problem is, because some courses, they need to have credit for in order to, in order to have credit for graduation, so there has to be some way to figure out, so we have to figure out how to do that, is all I'm saying.
Well.
I have a question there. I try to understand that discussion. So, if some student is willing to work hard, and some students are not, so, we're saying, if somebody is willing to work hard, how do we make the level playing field at ninth grade? I don't understand it. If somebody is willing to take more credit in middle school, and why can't we make that available for everybody, whoever wanted to work hard? And they go in with maybe more credit or some credits for high school? So, why it is not fair, I don't understand. Just explain, just give me an idea.
I can offer something.
Mr. Rosenthal.
It's not that you would take the credits away, it's just that when they started, their GPA would be zero like everybody else. Is that what, kinda what you're saying? And there's, I mean, I can see the reasons for that. I've actually thought of that as well. You let everybody start, I mean, high school's new, you know, for every, new to everybody, and maybe some kids, you know, are just kinda maturing enough to where they realize, hey, school's important, I'm gonna work hard now. And, you know, so they started, started a level playing field, started all over.
Here's my.
So, and I don't know if you can, I don't know if you can offer all those courses and make them accessible everywhere. You can try, but, you know, and it's not always easy for some kid to get from their middle school to a high school, to take a course, and then back again. I mean, that's something that I don't think you'll ever be able to do necessarily across the district.
But we, I mean, there might be alternatives to like distance learning and things like that.
Could be. Right, but then, then somebody, you know, distance learning is not as good as sitting in a classroom, and so, you're forcing a kid to do that just so they can keep up with somebody, so that they can make the top ten percent someday.
Yeah. Go ahead.
My thought around that is, it's similar to transferring from one school to the next school, especially if you're talking about credits. If you're transferring from one college to the next college, you get the credit from that, from that, from that school.
Right.
But then, not the GPA. So, you can do your work at a community college or a junior college, correct, and not spend the same amount of money, you know, at a four-year institution for your, for your primary or your general classes, and then you transfer to a four-year college, you're not getting the GPA from your junior college, you're getting the credits. And so, if, my personal opinion, if a student chooses to go ahead and start high school credits, you can go ahead and get the work done, it doesn't necessarily mean that you're gonna get the GPA at that time. Because I'm assuming that you're limiting the type of classes that are even offered on a middle school level. I mean, I'm not, I don't, I don't imagine that we're gonna be giving them the top, you know, your junior, senior type classes for your middle school students. That's not, that's in my mind, in my mind, what I'm imagining.
And that's.
You can tell me something differently.
That's a great analogy, and the other thing it does, kids that wanna do that, that wanna work hard, like you're saying, and I agree, I mean, you shouldn't take away, you know, every little incentive to work hard, but kids are gonna work hard, they're gonna try to get ahead anyway. There's still an advantage to doing that, because they can get to those AP classes a lot quicker, and that's when they can start, you know, working on the higher GPAs and the weighted courses and whatnot. They can get to dual-credit courses quicker, they can graduate early. So, there's still an advantage of taking those classes, it just kinda sets the, the bar is, when everybody hits ninth grade is, I mean, it just resets everything. So, so, to me, it's, there's still advantages, but it's, you know, it doesn't discourage kids, because I think, to me, I think if you know you're starting high school, and there's all these kids that have taken a bunch of ninth and tenth grade courses, you know you'll never catch 'em, you know, so.
So, let me, if you don't mind, I think there's two separate issues at play, and I definitely hear strong reaction from the board about the GPA aspect of this. Now, that's, and that's covered in a different policy, but it sounds like we may need to revisit that policy based on this conversation in light of how that would inform also EHAC. So, I guess, so as we continue down that path, we can pull that other policy as well for the board to review, but I would, in light of the conversation, I was also gonna mention, just for other consideration, level playing field, I know in other districts, one way they do the GPA is students receive their class rank and their weighting based on a certain block of classes. So, then whether they take it in middle school or high school, they're getting full credit for it, but it's predetermined, these are the classes that are gonna calculate the GPA. So, if students do more and over and above and more AP and all of that, you're getting rid of the way, you're, the real playing field is the finite number of classes, your English, you know, your, whatever, whatever, whatever we decide that would be, but it's defined, required courses for graduation in a finite number of classes. So, just a number, another thing to consider.
So, these policies that have to do with GPA and class rank are one of the policies that I think is on hold. What's the num, what's the letters, Dr. Whitbeck?
Yes, that is policy EIC local.
Right, so it's on hold right now because we're waiting on the Supreme Court ruling. So, but I did wanna bring this up tonight to capture it, so that when we get to that, which we will, then we know we wanna talk about it, because it's an important issue to the board. The separate issue, which I didn't let you get to, was the access to those courses. Where, right now, only limited places, some kids have access to courses, and it's not equal around, across the district. So, I think another important issue to the point to the board is that there's equity in access to those courses and opportunities, and how we do that, and what that looks like, I don't know. I just saw it crossed out in here as a thing, so I wanted to be sure it was being addressed in another place, and I, and maybe, Dr. Whitbeck, you know where that is addressed, or is it addressed, or is that something you're looking into next week?
That's what I wanted to clarify for you, Mrs. James. Was it your, were you wanting dialogue from staff to respond to these questions tonight?
No.
Or were you wanting us to do our research and provide you, the board, collective response to these questions?
The latter. I just wanted to get the things out there, so that, because we're, we've got a couple of weeks until our next meeting, but, and then you can decide which things fit into this set of actions and which are on hold for the next.
Got it.
Packet. Okay? Anything else on this? All right, so the next one is EHBC, and this is, so I had a comment about adding the word appropriate to the last paragraph, or to the last sentence of the first paragraph. So, is this one, excuse me, Mrs. Martinez, this was one that had a change, did we? But it was different from the board book, or?
That is correct. The one provided to you this evening, or the one in the board book, actually, is the one that incorporates the campus in the third paragraph down, the change, the campus staff will work with parents as partners.
So, it was different than our?
Spiral.
Spiral, but it was in, accurately in the board book. This, here, you can look at it, I had it. So, at the end of the first paragraph, receiving, I kind of liked the idea of making sure that there was a effort there that, let's see, yeah, that the principal's responsible to make sure the students were receiving appropriate services, which, I'm sort of lost here, which is the same, I think, as bullet number two, evaluate the services for effectiveness. So, either one of those changes was a thought. And then, my other comment on this one was, the definition of at-risk in the very first sentence, is, was that a legal definition, or is it just sort of a colloquial definition? The sentence says, students at all grade levels who have been identified as being at risk of dropping out of school. So, my thought was, while there's the at-risk legal term, there might be other students that are at risk in school, because they're, you know, there's problems at home, or they're, for whatever reason, their, their educational needs aren't being met, and it might not be under the legal definition. So, maybe someone can look into that. Does anybody else have any comments on this one? All right. Moving on to number three, which is EIE, retention and promotion. And I thought, yeah, could it be renamed promotion and retention, because it seemed more positive, like that's what we're trying to do, promote kids, but no, apparently not, because the government's called it, legislature called it retention and promotion. I was also, yeah, so deletion of the school attendance committee, where is that addressed? I couldn't, that paragraph was crossed out, but I don't know where it was addressed. Related to that was also the definition for grade placement committee, the GPC is referred to in the policy, but it's not the part that, where, some of the part where it was defined Yeah, grade placement committee, isn't really defined. And then, there was also, I felt that may, there was the concept of a parent being involved in some of these decisions, but it wasn't really defined or described how the parent would be involved in the decisions. It talks about the district gathering information, the recommendation of the student's teacher, but there's no description of where the parent is involved until the very end, which is when they have to appeal the decision. So, it seemed, you know, that was, the whole thing seemed over, seemed to be, you know, the parent, there would value, there could be valuable parent input before we got to that point, before the appeal point, is what I was trying to, was, which was what my point was. Okay. Turn on your microphone.
It doesn't appear that the parent's involved at all in most of these until you get to the appeal process, and I, that was my comment, is that perhaps that should be a consideration earlier on, and at least let the parent feel like they're part of the team, or informed, or of reasoning, and let them have some input before we get to the appeal process.
Right, and it talks about including, it talks about including them on the, in the grade placement committee, but it doesn't, then it doesn't talk about that in the later on, that all the references are crossed out.
Right, when they go grade seven to grade eight, or grade eight to grade nine.
Okay, so, and then the last thing, which I think was on one of those slides, maybe, maybe the previous one, I did mention about doing a philosophy for promotion and retention, and it, you know, we talked, last packet of policies, we talked about a policy on testing, we've talked about a policy on special ed, and we had a very interesting conversation this week about, should we have a sort of a one-stop shop for all the guiding philosophies of these policies? Or do we refer to a place in these various policies, because the structure's very awkward if you were going to look on the policy for promotion and retention? They're all in the EI section, so, we need a little bit of research on what the best way, where, as we go along, we maybe need to just have that as a placeholder, that where are we gonna put these guiding philosophies, and where are they gonna fit in? Any other comments or questions on this one? Thank you for my, your patience as we go through this, okay. Next one is graduation. Same thing, you know, graduation is what we're trying to do, so, should we have a philosophy about that? Should, do we wanna have a statement from the board that sort of guides that, or do our core beliefs and commitments already, does our mission already say it, or do we need to, do we wanna define it and make it a little clearer? You know, and we were talking to Charles last week, we were talking about a profile of a graduate, is that the type of thing that we get, you know, I'm not even, I'm quite honestly not even really sure what that is, but if we did that, then maybe that's where something like that could go here.
Then we can use the old adage, if it's not in policy.
Yeah, it doesn't exist.
I think it's a good idea to talk about graduation, but what I don't want to happen is that our philosophy or gets misinterpreted by our administration, that we're just trying to matriculate kids out of school, but we are trying to really equip them, so that when they graduate, you know, they'll be able to, you know, move on and do other things. But I just wanna make sure that, that's really clear about that, because sometimes when you talk about matriculation and those kinds of things, we can get into a pattern of just moving kids through the process, just because. So, I wanna make sure we're really clear on that from graduating our students. We really want them to be equipped, so.
Yeah. I think that's a really good point, Addie, because actually, in the previous policy on retention and promotion, the last paragraph of it talks about reducing student retention, which, okay, well, that's interesting, but it's sort of this related, right? If the, if, it's revert, yeah, so just move people along, but we're not really focusing on, on making sure they have the skills to go to the next step. So, it could be maybe reworded to a nice philosophy, but that's in EIE. Okay, and then one other comment on EIF was in the last paragraph on page four, when it's talking about the physical education, we need to have, instead of, the word appropriate is crossed out, but maybe we should add, make the word approved, because these, this is for Olympic sanctioned training programs and things like that, and it has to be approved. It can't just be, you're taking dance class, and so you can get PE credit or something. So, that would be my thought, add the word approved in, in that section. Okay, any, everybody have any other questions or comments on this one?
I was gonna ask Dr. Dupree if there was, this may be a little bit off subject, but have we ever considered a, an accelerated physical education type of a credit for those that are competing for the Olympics, or it takes a great deal of time to swim, or play tennis, or whatever they may be doing?
Not, what, can you clarify that?
Well, I don't, I don't know what it would be, I'm just saying, for those that have to spend three or four hours a day, obviously, they can't take the extra courses to take extra math, or, you know, and that's where, I mean, is, have you ever seen that type of a model, I guess I should ask?
In terms of their academic courses, where they get a reduced credits or something, is that what you're saying?
Well, or maybe more credit if they're swimming two or three hours a day. I don't, I don't know if we have.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, possibly, or.
No, I haven't, not for athletics. You know, we, I know there's been lots of latitude in terms of allowing them the flexibility in scheduling and the credits for PE for doing that, but not necessarily of other types of scheduling variance.
Okay. So, they are receiving, they are receiving credit for the time that they are?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what Ms. James was talking about, we, they go through the approval process.
Right, and I just wanted to clarify that a little bit.
Yes.
Did you, okay. All right, so any other comments or questions on any of these? All right. Okay, so I guess we'll, what's the plan then? We'll, Mrs. Martinez?
We will gather all of, review all of the feedback and questions that we've gathered, and get the appropriate stakeholders and leaders of the policy in their particular areas, and get back with you in a board update with responses to your questions, or revisions to the recommendations that we've provided, in time for the March twenty-eighth board meeting. And I'd like to add, at the March twenty-eighth board meeting, we'll also be providing information about those policies that we have on the list for further consideration, those E-series policies.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, our next item is the seven B, which is the additional campus and. Okay, our next item is the 7B, which is the additional campus and non-campus staffing for 2016-17.
And you've heard all of that in the presentation earlier?
Right, I think we've gone over that. Does anybody have any other questions or things that they, so if things, questions come to your mind as you're reviewing all of this, I know you can send them in to Mr. Spears, Ms. Edgar, Mr. Bassett, hopefully he'll be. So the next item is being pulled by the administration, so we can cross off that one.
D, all D?
C, not all D, sorry. C is the Memoranda of Understanding, and there are four of them. One is between Fort Ben ISD and the Literacy Council of Fort Ben County. Do we have any questions on this one? All right, next is with Memorandum of Understanding with Healthy Schools LLC. I noticed this was just for flu vaccines, and we used to have, the county used to have a mobile vaccination unit that went around to the different campuses. I don't know that they have that anymore, but I know that it was well-used by a lot of the campuses for all types of vaccines. I was throwing that out there as a thing that we might look at what partnerships might be available with the county for vaccinations, you know, if we had a vaccination day, these kids obviously need their booster shots. All right, Dr. Garcia's nodding to me that we are looking into that.
Anna Barton's here, can address that.
Ms. Barton?
Is it on, nope.
It is on.
Okay. Healthy Schools, for right now, what they're doing is they're offering the flu vaccine as a start, and then for in future years, what they'll do is they'll offer T-DAP, Minincha Cockle for our seventh graders. And we did, we used to have a van from the Health Department with, with the Affordable Healthcare Act, that went away, the money for that went away, they no longer have that. So with Healthy Schools, that's filling that gap. And, and like I said, the first thing they want to do are, are flu vaccines for our elementary and our middle schoolers, and then for the future, then our T-DAP and Minincha Cockle moving forward with other immunizations.
Great, I think that's a really good idea, because then we're sure that everybody's getting what they need, or has access to it.
Right, so speaking of access, doesn't Access Health also provide that?
Access Health does provide it, but this one in particular will provide vaccines whether they have insurance or not. So if they have insurance, they'll bill the insurance company, if they have Medicaid, they'll bill Medicaid, if they don't have any insurance at all, it will still be free for them. So it's, it's, it's servicing all of our students.
Okay. This is kind of off subject a little bit, but just with health concerns, do we have a MOU with, for eyeglasses as well, for, for the sight and vision?
We had our See to Succeed program, that was this last month, and I don't have particular numbers, I know they saw between three and 400 students, and those children are receiving their glasses.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you very much. Okay, next, next on the list is an MOU with Texana Center. Do we have any questions on this one, Mrs. Tosan?
Yeah, so are, with Texana, are we targeting specific schools, or are we contracting with them to come in and help as needed on any campus?
Any campus.
Okay, and what are the, is there like a, I reviewed the MOU and I didn't see anything about there being any limitations on that, is it, is it just for whatever we need, for whatever purpose, any amount, any, I mean, if we have a great deal of needs, is, are there any limitations on how many times they'll come out, or anything like that?
I'm not aware of any limitations, I don't believe any were stated in the MOU, and the, as the item states, we have about 115 students, this is an ongoing support beyond our district, and I'm not, I, I will double check, but I don't believe there are any limitations. But it's, it's for the students who need this assistance beyond the district.
Okay, I was just curious, because it said at no cost, but obviously Texana's very good at what they do, and we appreciate them supporting our district and our students in this way. Thank you.
All right, next is an MOU with MD Anderson Cancer Center regarding a video conferencing telepresence robot.
Same thing we saw Saturday night?
Yes, we saw it demonstrated at the.
That's a wonderful idea.
Gala.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions on that? Okay. Next is with University of Houston, it's an affiliation agreement between Fort Ben ISD and the University of Houston Health and Human Performance Department, dietetic intern program. Do we have comments or questions on this item? Okay, yes, it's excellent, excellent.
I should say excellent.
Excellent, exactly. That's why I repeated it. Item F, proposed donations over $10,000.
Ms. James, I'd like to interject on this item, because these are both construction projects, playground coverings, and we do need to add the right-of-entry agreement for the approval and execution as we did on prior items, that, but we overlooked that in this recommendation, so we will update that before we ask you to take action on it on the 28th.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any more information, any more questions on this, on those? All right, item G is our purchases. The first one is with ERG, Education Resource Group, adding an additional module to the existing modules. Do we have question on this? I think it's a great idea personally. All right, next is professional services on the CTE facility. This is for the CTE design of the CTE center. Do we have questions or comments on this? I have a question. I didn't see in this, we're just, there was, if you scroll down, there was a budget for architectural services, I guess, but there's not a project budget, I didn't see, Dr. Dupree, and we talked about our policy was going to include that, and then, my second question, this is part, this is a two-part question. Design contingency, since we made a point of clarifying what all that was, is this including design contingency, or just including design services?
Well, this, this item is for design services, and our commitment to the board is that we were going to begin bringing the budget forward. This was one of those that overlapped its preparation as we were having that conversation, so our intent is to update this item before the 28th to include, as we committed, the entire budget, including the design and the construction contingency and all of those things, when we bring it forward on the 28th.
Okay, I think that's great, then we can sort of see the whole picture.
Exactly, yes.
All right. Any more questions or comments on this one? All right, next is the District Marquee Replacements.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I would like to say thank you for this particular item, I, when I, when I saw it, I went directly to the list, to see who was on the list, and I think it's very important that we change these marquees, because that's the presence of our schools. And when you're sitting in front of those marquees, waiting to pick your child up from school, and you're sitting in a rundown, broken-down marquee, it doesn't give me hope or inspire me to do anything else. So I'm glad that we have these, and I've been in front of some, in front of some of these schools, and I'm, I'm glad that this is our, our first, first list, thank you.
Yes, and I'm hoping that there, there's going to be additional lists coming, and some, this is first wave, that's good, because there's, there's a few more where the letters are, you know.
No, but some of these were really, really, really hard to look at on a regular basis, and I, you know, it, it's the present, it's, it's the presence of your, you know, your school, you know, just like your image, you know? If you leave the house, you know, looking a certain way, that's what you, how people look at, and if you want to expect excellence from our children, we expect the maintenance and everything else that, and the buildings to look the same way. Yep.
Good point.
I wanted to add, not only that, but you, those that work there want to feel proud of where they work, and I think that that's important as well, for morale.
I do have one question, because my, my kids attend one of the newer elementary schools, Heritage Rose, and that marquee's already blurring, and you can't even, it's a blue blob instead of the logo. So are we changing how, the quality of, of the vendor, are we, are we changing the quality of, of the signage that we're using, given that this school is only not even six years old yet, and it's already wearing pretty badly?
On this particular bid project, you have very good type steps drawn up in the design and construction, so I can't address what may have happened before, but I do believe that on this particular bid project, we have type steps out.
Okay, that's good, because I think we want them to last longer than five and a half years. Yeah, thank you.
All right, any more questions on, comments on that one? Let's go on then to Ridgemont Elementary Spark Park. I have a question on that. It says that the, as part of our original plan, that the school, there was a school fundraising goal of $5,000. Do we know if that's happened, or if we, if that's still in progress, or what's the situation?
Ms. James, my understanding is that upon approval of the project, they would start the fundraising then, there was a reason they did not actually do the fundraising pending approval of it. And Ashley Dixon was here, is that, so they are going to actually start the fundraising after the project, if the project is approved, the district would front the money, and then the, the school would pay the general fund back.
Go ahead.
So then, how are we, I guess advertising or soliciting, soliciting for the fundraiser, because I think a lot more community organizations and members would like to get involved with that if they know about it, versus leading it to, you know, an already economically, you know, challenged population to come up with the money, not to say that they can't.
Right.
But based on our experiences with raising funds, I think it's important that we reach out to people outside of those four walls.
Yes, ma'am, and Ashley's going to come up with some additional.
Maybe when she's coming up, or someone could clarify, so we approved before the concept of doing this, is that what I'm understanding, and now we're talking about the actual project budget, and the, Mr. Fazakali, is that right?
It was approved before, and now we have put the bid project out on the streets without the process back in the leg, this recommendation, so that the board can approve that.
Okay. Ms. Dixon?
Good afternoon, good evening. With regards to the fundraising, Spark Park has been a, a constant advocate for us throughout this project, they've been involved in lots of our meetings, they, they provided their architect, who has had a lot of experience, they offer fundraising ideas and suggestions, and will be working with the school on trying to reach their goals with some initiatives that they have had success in neighboring districts, so.
Yes, thank you, Ashley, that's exactly right, it's, it's a, and the budget on page 96, it says in $5,000 for my school fundraising goal, and so that's, she's exactly right.
Right, so I think what Ms. Hanger was trying to say was that there might be more potential than the $5,000, I think that's one thing she was trying to say. And I know we talked about in this boardroom before about, particularly since this is an improvement required school, developing community partners in that community, and building those relationships to help us partner for a whole lot of things, this might just be one of them, but there might be other opportunities. And so I think what Ms. Hanger was maybe getting to was that this is, could, we could leverage this a little bit as sort of a launching point, and maybe build some relationships in a bit broader scale, where we want individual contributors, and everybody bring their, you know, their change or whatever to contribute, but we could make this into something a little bit better.
Yes, and we're in agreement, we hear, we've heard the board clearly on that, and I agree, this is a good launching point, to build a broader, a broader engagement for the school. And so, you know, our community engagement staff will be working to support the efforts along with Ashley and the Spark Park team as a starting point, and then we'll continue to expand.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree, Mr. Rice?
Well, excuse me, for the project, I just wonder why we're waiting to start fundraising now? Why did we not start, begin fundraising when the project was approved?
I think that's an excellent question, with, I will have to follow up and try to gain more understanding as to why we were not previously doing that.
Dr. Dupree, Ashley and I spoke about it, she, I think, has a.
Okay. As you'll see from the agenda item, we were over budget from what the initial project budget, the contract with Spark Park had indicated that if the budget exceeded, the base bid exceeded what they had previously discussed, is that the district or the organization could not, could, could change and not proceed forward with it. So we thought to, to go ahead and wait until we actually found what the budget was coming in. We were seeing, when, when the Spark Park architect was working up a project budget for us, we were right on the edge, so we wanted to make sure that this would be something that was approved, because more funds were going to be made available, and we were not aware at the time that Spark Park would don't, would front that additional monies.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, thank you, Ms. Dixon. Next is the Financial Audit Firm Services. Whitley Penn, do we have any questions on this one? All right, then the next item is item H, that's the end of our purchases. The item H, excuse me, is the Joint Election Agreement, and the Contract for Election Services with, thank you, Mr. Bro for being here tonight.
Thank you so much.
With the county, sorry, I was interrupted, my brain interrupted. Do we have questions on this, comments? All right, next is, are the minutes from the previous meetings? Do we have any comment, corrections to the minutes? All right, do we have any, I think that's all of our review items, next we have audience response to our agenda, do we have any audience, any audience response, Mrs. Porter?
No one signed up.
No one signed up, and it looks like only employees are left. Very loyal employees, these must be the most loyal employees, I think it's true. All right, so having no further business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Meeting adjourned, thank you so much.